We now reconvene the meeting. At this point in time, we're moving on to Action Item E of the clerk would read.
E is approval of proposed revision to governing body rule 5.3 entitled Agenda Contents.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. At the last meeting, we proposed some changes to the governing body rules that would adjust the order of the agenda. And so we bring those changes back before you for consideration and approval.
Any comments or questions with regards to this item? Is there a motion? Deputy Mayor?
Move to approve.
We have a motion for approval by the deputy mayor or second by Councilman Jensen. Comments or questions, Councilman Cohen.
Mr. City Manager, we had an issue with the order of invocation and things like that, so that wouldn't happen during an official meeting. Has that been resolved in this?
Was said in.
There was a, you had a, an issue where the invocation would fall.
Right.
And you didn't want to have it in the official meeting, and I mean, things like that, have those things been ironed out?
Yes, so invocation and pledge of allegiance are before the roll call, because the meeting doesn't officially start until we call roll.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we do have two individuals sign up to speak on this item, Mr. Park Trammell.
I respectfully ask Mr. Ledbetter.
Second person signed up to speak is Mr. Joseph Ledbetter.
Governing body. I was gonna ask somebody what was the reasoning behind this change, because we've had this for a while, I've never seen any problems with it. I mean, I, it just seems like I remember this is the way we always did it. I did hear somebody say a comment that maybe somebody in announcements wanted to comment on people and public comment after they'd already spoken. I said, "That's kinda odd." I mean, I would hope that's not going on, because if a person's at the podium and you have a question and they feel like answering it, I don't know why, with the chair's permission, they couldn't answer it or continue that discussion if they have a question about a policy and they don't seem to be getting an answer and somebody wants to give them the answer, I don't know why that would be a problem. But anyway, that's, that's really all I want to say. I don't see the need for the change. And sometimes you change things and there was no reason to change it, and you find out, "Well, it was working just fine before, why did we change it?" So I don't even know the reasoning for changing public comment from behind announcements to in front of announcements. And I will say that that's the way it's set up, and I know that's not as esteemed a body, but the Parks and Rec advisory, we have the public comments after the board members' comments, if any of them want to speak, and not all of them do. I do, but anyway, imagine that. But anyway, that's, that's all I was wondering, it didn't seem like there's any reason to change it. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Additional questions or comments from the body, Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, I won't support this. On page one, if you have on your agenda, it says, "To make arrangements for special accommodations, please call blah, blah, blah." And I think that that will do it, if somebody doesn't want to wait around. I too, I think, I think all this back and forth, people are gonna get confused, and we don't always have the answer for them, and I don't know, after 20, 30 minutes, if we'll still have the answer for them, so I'm not one for change, I'm not voting for it. Thank you.
Seeing no other additional questions or, oh, are there? Okay, so I guess we proceed with voting.
Yep.
I'm sorry?
We have seven yes, Ms. Ortiz voting no.
Seven having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to action item, action number five, which is the non-action items. If the clerk would read item A.
A is update on staff action regarding the governing body goals and priorities.
City Manager.
Mayor, governing body, normally I would go through and highlight specific things, but given my voice, the way it's been with my cold, I would just assume not do that and get the froggy voice. So please refer to the report that's included. The items in red are the items that I would have covered, and so if you have any questions or concerns related to those items as to what we've accomplished, please get ahold of me.
Thank you, City Manager. Deputy Mayor?
Can I ask you a question now, instead of getting ahold of you?
Hmm?
Can I ask you a question now, instead of getting ahold of you?
Yeah.
Okay. So, on the assist 501 with community perception and involvement, all I see that we've done is engaged some students. I don't see anything about the elementary, I don't see anything about middle school, I don't see anything about how we assisted with the community perception of 501. So I'd like to know, I mean, I know we had the opportunity to go tour and see what the school's doing, I don't know how that helps the community's perception, because how do they know that we went and toured and what we saw? So I guess I'm still confused, I was confused last time we got our report on exactly what we are doing, when people say, "I don't want to move to Topeka because I don't like the public school system." How are we addressing that?
City Manager, if I could take this to save you some voice, one of the things that we did was that every council member had the opportunity to participate in a meeting with Dr. Anderson herself, and I know you said that, but then part of that meeting with Dr. Anderson was that we started talking about plans in which the council can engage with the community and with the school to start changing the conversation. One of those things that we discussed was they were going to have a follow-up with Great Schools and with Zillow, which is one of the biggest detractors that we have. When somebody is looking at our community, that is looking to relocate to our community, they take a look at Zillow typically. And Zillow partners with an organization called Great Schools. When they look up the scoring on our students, the scores that they're receiving are over five, I think seven years old, they said 2012 was the last time that those scores were updated. There has been a lot of improvement in our school district, so when people start looking at the school district based on those scores, they're having a really negative perception. So one of the things that we have worked on is the school is following up on communications with Zillow and both with Great Schools, so that we can eliminate or update the information there. The other thing that was discussed as a potential was having a campaign in which the council members that have gone to school in Topeka High and the members of the governing body could speak out and talk about how they got from where they're at, from Topeka High, and celebrate the pride that we have. I mean, not Topeka High, sorry. That was a Freudian slip, because my daughter's going to Topeka High. So I'm so sorry, there's a lot of pride there in Topeka High, but. Well, with action? Well, any of our schools in Topeka 501 is what I intended to say. So the, one of the ideas was to look at the council members and figure out which ones have graduated from Topeka 501 school districts, or their children, and have them share stories that could be shared in social media, celebrating the pride that we have in our Topeka 501 school district. So there were several strategies that were in process. I'm more than happy to ask Dr. Anderson and her team to give us a report out, out of those proposed strategies that we discussed, so that the council could then have the feedback. But the intention was that during that meeting, those strategies were going to be discussed by each council member, and then brought back to the body with a report.
Okay, then can we update our, our report that we got right here, because none of that's in there?
Okay.
And all I heard about the meeting was that we were gonna tour, so I had no idea we were, we were meeting with the doctor, is that what you understood? So I, I would have liked to have gone to that, had I known we were gonna do that. So yes, I would like an update, please.
Of course.
Thank you.
Additional comments or questions?
Mayor, in addition, Chief Cochran has been doing some things with the police department with 501, and he could cover those if you'd like. Chief?
Mayor, City Manager, Council, Topeka Police Department's done a lot of involvement to help improve the image of the city of Topeka and the governing body with USD 501, a lot of endeavors. One of them, I'll just start real simple. First one is, we have police pals, which we write letters to fourth and fifth grade students, classes rotate, schools rotate, and then at the end of each semester, we go out and we have a pizza party with the students there. We started a youth outreach program at Chase Middle School, which is an officer that's very similar to what Officer Tim Bell does at Eisenhower, which is the OK program. We've done that at Chase Middle School, that's basically the same thing, but unlike the OK program, the officer at Chase Middle School services all the kids that go to school there, not just African-American young men like the OK program at Eisenhower. Robinson Middle School's gonna be our next focus for that. These youth outreach officers are mentor officers, and they deal with the families, they deal with the students, they improve grades, attendance, and all that good stuff. And then, that program then ties into what we're doing with Washoe University, where when those kids achieve certain things, they have criteria they gotta meet, we then take them out to Washoe University, they get to tour the campus, they get to go in the locker rooms, football, basketball, soccer, softball, get to meet the players, especially kids that were local kids that are now playing at the next level, and then they get to go to that athletic program. We started the T-CAL program, we have a law enforcement track at T-CAL, which we have law enforcement officers that teach that professional track, so at the end, when they're done, when they're done, they have college credit, which they can then enroll at Washoe University. To expand that program, to expand our explorers program as well, we now teach introduction to criminal justice classes at all the high schools in USD 501, and that feeds them into the T-CAL program. And so, we, and then of course, we have the SROs. But those are, there's a lot of programs that we're really doing, day in and day out with USD 501. We recently just went through a promotional process from sergeant to lieutenant. That whole process was held out at T-CAL, so that partnership is expanding there. And so, those are some of the things, just real briefly, that we've really just initiated this year and the year before.
So are the SROs involved with that, or is that, and I don't want to sound like, like I don't appreciate, I think all that's great, but does that take our officers off the street, or are the SROs doing it?
Yeah, it does take officers off the street, it is separate from the SRO program. But the whole purpose of the teaching in high school, freshman level, and T-CAL is to build young people, vibrant young people, that want to be interested in law enforcement in the city of Topeka, where they grew up, where they went to school, where the families live, and develop those individuals to become police officers, that's the intent. So yes, it does take a couple officers off the street, but it's also one of those things that we feel, just like the outreach officer at Chase, Officer Tim Bell at Eisenhower, those are schools where we have young people that have a lot of issues. And so it is very important that we deal with those young people at that level. That's why Robinson Middle School's gonna be our next focus, and yeah, it does take a couple officers off the streets, but the reward that we hope to see, and I'll never see it in my lifetime, because I'll only retire here before long.
There you go.
Yeah, so the fifth and sixth graders and the younger ones that we're reaching in those programs, you know, we won't know the benefits until they start reaching higher grades, but what I can tell you is, Tim Bell's program at Eisenhower's been so successful, his kids have now moved into the high school ranks at Hawn Park, their attendance is up, they're graduating. Tim Bell now volunteers his time as a coach at Hawn Park. And so those programs, those officers are dedicated so much to the youth in our community and want to see them succeed. And again, the whole purpose for us is, we hope to improve that community relations, improve that image of young people that they have with law enforcement, and then also to try to fuel that fire that we get local people to want to be police officers in the city of Topeka.
Perfect, great, thank you.
Thank you. City Manager, I did want to bring up something from the goals. When we had our initial strategic planning session, and we had our follow-up, one of the big action items that we had was in our city rebranding, one of them was, the council unanimously, I think, approved that we wanted to do a rebranding of our community with the flag. Once the council set that in motion, Forge was engaged. In addition to that, we had many people in our community participate in delivering to us flag designs, and then we had a private donor that put his money into the process so that we could have an unknown firm provide several designs to the community, and importantly so, the community then voted on the flag, a flag that I think most of us wear with a lot of pride. And I have received several phone calls of people very concerned with the fact that we have not had that as an action item on our agenda. So what, what I would like to do, City Manager, if possible, is if we could get a date in the near future, so that it could be brought on for approval. I've had, again, a lot of comments, school kids, hundreds of school kids, doing pictures of their flag and being very proud of it. But most importantly, whether, whether we approve or not the flag, in the end, with the process of the body, I think it's something that we, as a body, agreed upon, we had presentations with how the process was going to work, we were invited to engage, and now we have a final product, and now we have several community members asking us, "When are we gonna move on this?" So it would be wonderful if we could have that on the agenda at some point.
Sure.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, I have a correction here, City Manager.
What's that?
It says, "Community outreach bureau with TPD implemented a plan for neighborhood and community walks, the first effort to begin in Oakland area along southeast Sixth Street."
Yes.
That is incorrect. There's not Sixth Street in Oakland.
Oh.
That should be, the first effort to begin in the East Topecas, where's the chief at?
East Pica.
East Topeka?
Yeah, and we've started those.
Yeah.
Right, but that, that should not say Oakland, it should say East Topeka, correct?
Okay, we'll make the correction.
Correct.
Okay.
East Topeka.
Unless Sandra stole my street over there in Oakland.
It's um.
Well, thank you very much, it seems that there's no more discussion on this. There is a person signed up for public comment, and that is Mr. Joseph Ledbetter.
Joseph Ledbetter. And I'm gonna waive my right to public comment later, so I'll just wrap up with this. This item caught my, my attention, and occasionally I see, you know, you're having discussions about goals you'd like for the city, and I think one of the most important goals we need to have right now is, in light of what's been going on for about seven years, the city has continued to lose population, and I think it's time we're gonna have to talk about it. We're gonna have to talk about how to get builders to build inside the city limits, give them waivers, give them maybe a free water meter, whatever it takes, but start building the city again with residences. 501 with Zillow is a problem, but 501 can, can solve one of its problems immediately. That is stop shutting down neighborhood schools. And I hear that from a lot of people. They're very angry about these neighborhood schools continuing to be shut down, because we've still got some very good neighborhood elementary schools, and they don't want any more shut down, and 501's gonna have to start listening to the patrons, not what their consultants tell them. One of the problems that happens when 501 shuts down one of these elementary schools actually snowballs over into problems of playground equipment, because Parks and Rec has not kept up with replacing playground equipment and upgrading it, and it's done, in my opinion, a very poor job, and I've said that very vocally as part of that advisory. These, when a school gets shut down, all that playground equipment gets fenced off. Well, they just shut down Shaner, and I know, years ago, I helped do fundraising for that playground equipment for my kids, and yet it's shut off from the neighborhood now. So it's all fenced off. So there are problems that happen that we probably should have a healthy discussion with their administration and say, "Hey, do you realize this is going on? I mean, you need to address this." And other things I'd like to see, let me move on from that real quick. I think we need to keep our water and sewer rates as low as possible for our residences and businesses, and we have many food producers using a lot of water in this town. We've gotta stay competitive, folks, if you want those jobs. I'd like to see enhancements in productivity of the street department, I've said that many, many times, and I sent y'all an email, just kind of pinpointing some ideas that I've addressed in the past, and I'll continue to address. One of the things I'd like to see with the water department, I've been kind of watching this recently, is it's taking some of these people a long time to get these streets reopened when the water mains or water lines are broken, and I've had one road near my office that's been open and shut, I think, three or four times all summer, and it wasn't even from breaks, it's just that you'll drive by some of these sites and there will be nobody working on it for days on end. The equipment's parked there, but there's nobody working. So is that the contractor, or is that staff? I'm not in charge of that department, but I will tell you that if it's contractors, maybe we need more contractors, instead of fewer. Maybe we need to broaden the pool, if they're not able to keep up, and get these roads reopened quickly. I'd like to see our traffic lights finally, once and for all, synchronized. We have the technology already available, the software available to do it, and I think it's just a matter of pushing the ball and getting it done. So these are just some of my concerns, you've seen the email, I don't think I pass that on to you, Brent, but I will, I will make sure you have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Have a good evening.
We now move on to item B, if the clerk would read.
B is downtown comprehensive parking plan status update and vendor demonstration of new parking management technology.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we're going to have an update regarding our parking plan. I'll introduce Public Works Director, Dr. Jason Peake, and then he'll introduce our consultants that are here to talk to us. Dr. Peake?
Good evening, governing body. As you heard, we're here to give you kind of an update on the downtown parking plan implementation activities, and tonight, what we're really gonna focus on is sharing with you, you're gonna hear from our vendors shortly about the technology we've selected for our parking system. But first off, I'd like to recognize Brenda Hayes, who's our parking division manager in the back, as well as our Deputy Director of Public Works, Hannah Yoreg, a new face that you'll see. They've been working tirelessly over the past year to help modernize our parking system. That was one of the, the key facets of this parking plan, was to look at modernizing our parking infrastructure, improving our operations, and then what we'd like to do later at the work session, or if you defer that, is to talk about rates and fees to support the parking system. Just a short thing, some of the activities that we've been doing is we have modernized the infrastructure in our parking garages. When I got here in 2016, we had three different software vendor systems, even one of the vendors had gone out of business. Brenda and her team worked tirelessly this, this last year to get those upgraded onto a T-Bus system. What that's also allowed us to do is better manage the utilization of the garages, so we've been able to clear wait lists, get people into those high-demand garages, and better utilize it. We've also removed meters in the downtown area. Some of you may notice, we had a lot of meters on our periphery streets that you wouldn't see a car parked at all day long. So while we're not getting any revenue off that, we're still expending expense, sending staff out to check the condition of those meters, make sure they're functioning. So part of that study was looking at getting rid of those, we've gotten rid of those and converted those to time zones, and you'll see people are using some of those areas. The other piece I'd talk about, and you'll hear more at the, our next meeting on work discussion on our financials, but we've engaged our customers downtown, we've been working with the Greater Topeka Partnership, they have a parking subcommittee, we've been working with small business owners downtown, tomorrow night, we're going to the Downtown NIA, and we continue to be engaged with customers about helping improve the operations downtown. And I think one of the biggest things that are gonna help improve the operations is the presentation you'll hear next, and I'll start by asking a question. Who has a quarter in their pocket right now? So we've got two out of nine. So how do you pay for parking, right? Most of our parking, or all of our meters are coin-operated, and so what you're gonna hear from our vendors is not only modernizing our parking meter infrastructure, but moving it into what most cities are doing with the next iteration of parking. We also saw there, in Montgomery, on the intra-city visit, they had the mobile app. So I'm gonna turn, turn it over to Kelsey Owens with Passport, and then you also hear from Jim McKay with McKay Meters to talk about the technology.
Hi, everybody, thank you guys so much for taking the time to hear Jim and mine's presentation for the parking innovation that we're hoping to bring here to the city of Topeka. I'd like to echo Jason's comments and thank the city staff, who has done so much hard work on this over the past year as well. So I'm Kelsey Owens with Passport Parking, and I also want to introduce Jim as well.
Hi, Jim Taylor from McKay Meters.
Awesome, and so what we'll cover today is, we really want to make sure we hit on a few core themes of why we feel that we're the best partnership for the city of Topeka, and, you know, when Jim and I were talking about this partnership for the city, what we really felt was gonna be important to you all, and it's, again, everything that Jason hit on, in the overarching goal is to help modernize the parking here in Topeka. And through Passport's software, we're gonna hopefully be able to bring in a new way for folks to pay, and then with McKay and the meters that Jim is gonna speak to as well, they'll have an upgrade to their meters, which is just gonna make it a lot more convenient for folks to come downtown and pay to park. So Passport, when we got started, we were just a mobile pay company, so download an app, pay to park, go about your day. And we still do that, and we do it really well. But what Passport's expanded and what we're focusing on now is, we also are doing more than just the mobile pay for parking, we do mobile pay for permits, and we do an enforcement software system for your enforcement officers as well. Again, with the idea to just really help modernize the system. And then, of course, we're gonna have the smart meters conversation here as well, and really what we want to focus on tonight, and what the conversation will be about, is this partnership and the work that we're hoping to do with the city of Topeka. So with that, I am gonna go ahead and pass it down to Jim to talk about his meters.
Sure. So Kelsey mentioned smart meters, so when we talk smart meters, we're talking single, two-space, and multi-space meters to our company, it's, they're all the same, just a different cabinet shape. Everything communicates in the backend through the server level, and to Kelsey's backend, to give the city the smart initiative and data that they're looking for to make decisions on everything, the parking ordinances, bylaws, as the city grows, what, what motions or directions you have to take with your system. And what we're proposing is the equipment to manage everything on the enforcement side, as well as the, the human interface on the street. So it's gonna be an identity for the city, it's, it's a clean, very robust, military standards, exceeds all the military standards, so for the climate and for the use of the end user, it's, it's ideal. We have both the single space, or the multi-space meters, pay by plate, as well as the dual bay meters, or two-space meters, which would replace the traditional meters. So by introducing communications, we're able to pull and push and pull data in bidirectionally, and share that data for different decisions to be made, whether it's a car, enforcement of a car, or other things moving forward. The communications protocols that we're using are leading the world technology, as well as it's, everything's solar harvested, so you're looking at a very green product for the city of Topeka, so something that, that you can be proud of, that you can trust, and it's very, very, very robust in the field. We've been in the, we've been your incumbent vendor for parking meters for over 15 years now, with the same equipment, so we know it's, it's gonna withstand the test of time, and we look forward to moving you to the next level and into that smart world for parking.
Awesome. So the other component of this technology partnership is, of course, the, the mobile pay application as well. So what I'd like to do is do, show you guys some of the different screenshots and what it looks like for a parker who's trying to utilize the application. So a first-time parker comes to Topeka, they have the option to download the Passport app. So what I'd like to do is do, show you guys some of the different screenshots and what it looks like for a parker who's trying to utilize the application. So a first-time parker comes to Topeka, they have the option to download the Passport application. Once they download it, our goal is to make sure it's as easy as possible for them to pay to park. Again, you know, if you're coming downtown to go to a concert or to the theater, the last thing on your mind is parking, and you really want to make sure it's something that they don't even remember, right? That's the ideal parking situation, something they don't remember. So what Passport has done is we have developed an app that uses progressive profiling, where we're only going to ask for information that we need in order for them to start a session. From there, they're going to just simply put in the zone number, which would be denoted on the signage. Then they're going to select the amount of time that they'd like to stay, put in their credit card. It'll break down all the details for the parking session, hit accept, and they have paid to park. So again, the idea being make it as seamless as possible for them to pay for their parking experience and go about their day. The other really exciting benefit of all this is they can then extend remotely as well. So say they have a meeting in downtown that's, you know, they thought originally was going to be an hour, looks like it's going to run over. Right now, they have to run down to the meter and feed the meter. With the application, they can extend right from the office that they're in. Really, what the app is going to do is it's going to move you guys from allowing parkers to only pay for the quarters that they have in their pocket to allowing them to pay for the amount of time that they actually want to stay in the session, which is really exciting. Passport can also work with the local merchants, and it offers discount codes as well. So I know a lot of local merchants are interested in doing discount codes to encourage folks to come to their businesses. Through the validation code system, they can easily do that, where they load funds to their account, pass out their discount codes. For example, you know, buy a $5 worth of coffee in my shop, and I'll give you a dollar off of parking. The parker easily puts that validation code into their application, and they've got a discounted parking session. From that, so that's the mobile pay side of everything. Passport, again, as I mentioned, does more than just, does anybody want me to restart now, or I'm going to wait an hour? Might throw off the presentation a little bit, but Passport, as I mentioned earlier, we do more than just the mobile payments. We really took a look at what our clients were doing and what they needed. In a lot of cities, one that comes to mind is the city of Omaha. They came to us with an outdated, clunky handheld enforcement system, and they talked to us about what they wanted. And so we built an application, which I'll show you here shortly. That's also how our permit web portal was built as well, with our client, the New York City Housing Authority, came to us with an updated, wanting an updated system. So we worked hand-in-hand with that client to build this portal for them. So the permit portal will now be branded for the city of Topeka. Folks can easily go online and buy any employee permits or residential permits as they see fit. And then it does away with the need for hang tags or needing to come into city offices if they don't necessarily want to do that. On the enforcement side of things, it's going to make it a lot easier for enforcement officers to switch over from just being somebody who issues tickets into somebody who's going to become an ambassador for the city. Essentially, it's a lot easier for them to get around downtown, quickly issue tickets where, when it is necessary. So that way, it frees up their time to help folks out with any questions or comments that they might have. So your enforcement officers, to get started on Passport's system, will just need the Android device, a Bluetooth printer, and then they can start writing citations. Everybody can admit that they don't, nobody likes parking tickets, right? So if I get a parking ticket, I'm going to be really angry in that moment, but if it's an easy experience for me to go ahead and pay for that citation, then I'll just get it off my to-do list, and I can move on with my day. So what Passport has done is we will build a city-branded payment portal for parkers to go to. So if I do get a citation, I can immediately, in real time, go online to pay that citation. The website that we will build is mobile-responsive, so they can do it even on their mobile device. They could pay the app, pay the citation right then and there and be done with it. So again, nobody likes getting a parking citation, but if we make it easy for folks to pay those citations, it's a little bit better of experience. Additionally, Passport has license plate reader technology that the city is looking to utilize as well, which will make the enforcement a lot safer for your enforcement officers, so they can easily get downtown, get around downtown, excuse me. Some of the cities that I mentioned that we do this with, the city of Omaha, since that time and working with them and their enforcement officers to build out the platform, we've expanded and now work with cities like New Haven, Connecticut, Charlotte, North Carolina, which is actually where I live and where the Passport headquarters are. And then we work with other cities up there as well, like Salt Lake City. Salt Lake City was an interesting one. They started with our mobile pay app and enjoyed doing business with us, so expanded their partnership to use the enforcement as well. All of this, both the McKay meters and the Passport system, will also provide city staff with a lot more backend management. They're going to have access to a lot more data for them to utilize and help to continue to make great decisions moving forward and down the line. So that was, you know, everything that Passport wanted to highlight. I think one of the things that really makes us excited for this opportunity is knowing that the city is trying to modernize their parking technology. And with this partnership, we really feel that the city will be able to do that now and to the future. We don't view you guys as a customer, we view you as a partner. And how can we work with the city of Topeka to get you what you need, so you can continue to grow the parking program and downtown Topeka as well?
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for our presenters? Councilman Jackson?
Thank you. So a couple of questions on your app. Does it pick the zone automatically by GPS, or do people have to manually enter that?
That's a great question. So it does not pick it automatically by GPS. GPS right now isn't within a five-foot radius, which is what we'd want to make sure was a good user experience. So what it can do is the first time they would put in their zone, say it's Zone 100, the next time, if they go back to Zone 100, it would show them the most recent zone, so they could easily select that, rather than having to retype it in.
And so by zone, you mean parking spot, their stall, then?
No, so that, forgive me for not explaining that yet. A parking zone is what tells the app where the parker is. So it'll let them know, hey, I'm on Kansas Street, and the parking is a dollar per hour. We'll work with the city during implementation to set zones throughout the city. I've seen it where cities can have one zone for the entire area. If you have different rates, you might want to do smaller zones. It'll just depend on the implementation process there.
And five foot's not accurate enough for that?
Well, the GPS won't pick it up within a five-foot radius. So if it's, you know, if the zone ends here and then right here, we don't want it to be a bad user experience.
I see. Does your app drive people to garages?
Yeah, so we have the ability to display you, we could in the future, display availability within the garages and motivate folks to go there. That is something that we are speaking with the city on for future innovations is there as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
City Mayor.
Okay, a couple of questions. How often is this updated? Like, does it update automatically every year, every month, every?
Yeah, the app is on a two-week sprint cycle, so we can push updates every two weeks for the app itself, for what the parkers use. And then the Android application for the enforcement officers is on that same sprint cycle, where they're doing a development every two weeks and pushing out.
But what about the meter itself? Does it ever?
The parking meter itself? Once the bylaws are instated in the meter, we have the rates all situated. So if you have a change in the bylaws, you'd simply log on what that rate change would be and deploy it to the route, the zone, or the post location that's identified as needing that rate change. And that could be up to 16 times a day. So you can have your home teams, home games with tailgating and different criteria there, or it could be a scheduled home team games that are just ad hoc around the city. Or different rates for different events.
I apologize, I don't think I answered the question correctly on my end. The rates can be updated in real time as well, so you can do the same.
So once you're online, everything is remote, whether you pre-program it on a scheduled deployment, or if you want to do it ad hoc, and someone comes in and says, I have an event today, and I'd like to have special parking rights for that event. So it depends on what you're looking for.
Does it take the chip? I mean, can you, do you ever put a card into it, or is it all in on the app?
Absolutely. So the human interface is designed so that you have a dip switch or a dip card. You never leave, the card never leaves your hand. So when you insert that into the card reader, it bottoms out, makes the connection, validates the card, and then authenticates the parking session.
So you don't use like a Visa or something?
Yep. Visa, MasterCard, American Express, you can use your, eventually, we're going to get to Near Field Communications, NFC.
Yeah, just make sure everybody understands, you will have multiple options to pay. At the meter, you can still plug coins, you have the ability to do a card, or you'd have the ability to do the app. So we're reducing the barriers to payment with this new technology.
Yes.
Okay, and then you said that you can extend, like during a meeting or something. What if you said you were going to be there an hour, and you were there 10 minutes? Are you just out of that money?
Yeah, that's a good question. We have the ability to stop parking as well. So you could hit the stop parking on the application, and it'll land your parking session.
Okay, and then if someone has a code, like a store gives you a code, like is that code, could I use that code for a week? Can I give it to my friend, and they can use it? I mean, how's that?
Yeah.
How do you save?
Great question. So we have the backend system that the merchants would use. They would be able to create one-time-use codes, so you couldn't pass along to all of your friends. We could also do universal codes, so if you want to encourage free parking during the holiday season, we could distribute universal codes that would end, say, or be live from December 1st to December 31st. So it wouldn't, nobody could abuse the system.
Okay, and one more, Jason, Dr. Peake. Are we talking about replacing every single meter in the?
Great question to kind of close out this discussion. So right now, we're talking about a phased approach. That first phase of the replacement of meters basically kind of includes the block around City Hall and the county courthouse, so kind of Quincy over to Monroe. That's what we're programming for first quarter. To continue modernization of the remainder of the infrastructure is what we'd like to talk to you about at the rate discretion, because the parking fund is an enterprise fund. It's solely dependent on the revenue we get from customers. In order to sustain that funding, we need to have a conversation about changing our rates and how we pay for parking. Our intent would be to modernize all the infrastructure, but also to be smart. Like I talked about, removing meters from locations that we don't have high utilization, so we don't have that cost. With the Passport technology, there are some cities that are going to what are called app-only zones, so you're not investing.
In hardware?
Yeah, not that he wants to hear this, but you're not buying meters, you're putting this on out, and people that use the app can park in those zones. And then, so we're not investing in the hardware. But I think that's just what you're seeing from these folks is the future of parking and where technology's going. That's why we spent a lot of time looking for the right vendor team, and we found it. But we will be taking a phased approach and implementing it.
Great. Thank you.
Councilman Jackson?
So I had two more follow-up questions after hearing Councilwoman Cleer's hats up tonight. Do you guys talk to each other? If I, not that I don't like apps, I'm a huge technology guy, but I despise parking apps because they take forever to set up and use, although you have a fairly novel approach in not making me create an account. I plug a bunch of coins in your meter, and then I'm in that meeting. Can I use your app to extend his meter?
That's something that we've talked about before, so we would just need to go through the process to get it.
Yes. Right now, no, we don't have that linked coins and digital with data. But if you had the space number, we could up it, or the plate number, you could add time to the plate. So in the meeting, we'd have to, we'd have to talk about.
Need a com-identifier.
That's a great question, because it's the first time it came up in this venue.
Well, so in that case, then, if I'm looking for a spot to park downtown, do you have any visibility to which meters he has that are being used?
Sorry, I can, I can kind of, we can, we share data on occupancy, so whether the space has been paid or not, and we can share that out for enforcement and guided enforcement as well, so in that regard, if that answers your question.
And then future capabilities would be to show that wayfinding in the application as well.
So here's the next step. Now, do you integrate that data with Google Maps, so if I say I want to go to such-and-such business in downtown, Google Maps will tell me where I can park to get there?
No, we don't have that currently.
Correct.
Great idea, though.
That's copyright.
Councilman Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. I think I heard the term you used guided enforcement, is that, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Does that mean the second someone's in violation, it's?
As soon as that meter's expired, we would know on the backend server side, so we can push that data out, letting heat maps know where they're most effective for enforcement, if required. It's not like someone's standing behind a tree waiting for the meter to expire, but similar.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much for this presentation. It seems like there's no more questions.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate it.
Thanks.
This concludes the items on our agenda. At this point in time, we move to item six announcements, if the clerk agrees.
No, please, we need the agenda.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The first thing I want to do is show the governing body the awards that we received. Out of, I think it was eight that were given, we got two. One was for the Team Up Cleanup Project that we've done, the program that we've done. It won an award in the public safety category. And then our zoo, for its teen camp, won in the youth engagement program. So, and then last year, we received, the police department received one for their, one of their programs. So we've come away with some good hardware here and excited, putting an extra emphasis with our grant writer. She's also helping us to write these award applications, and we're doing a lot of good things. And it's very important that we get recognized for them. And we're able to share what we're doing with others, and they're interested in copying it, so that's important. The next item I have is, in two days, we were scheduled to have a work session to continue to discuss the revenue side of things related to the parking. Due to some notices that I've received, we're having some absences. And I think that in order to be able to make sure that all information is shared, that it would probably be best, in my opinion, to look at canceling that meeting and rescheduling those items. What I'm looking at is the parking plan and funding of that needs to be decided soon. At a minimum, we would look to have that on the November 12 agenda. I know that is the same night we're doing interviews, but we really need to have this discussion. It's a critical timing for us. So the other, other option is, is to search for another date. And when I looked for a date before, this was the only one that looked like it would work. And now with the absences that I've been notified already, it's a very good chance we won't have quorum that night, so.
Thank you, City Manager.
Yeah, there were two subjects, the parking plan and the zoo governance, and so we will look to reschedule those, unless the governing body feels they would want to move forward, and then we would have separate updates to those that missed. So basically, looking for your guidance on that, whether you want to move forward with those that can attend or reschedule it.
So let's send the City Manager an email, letting him know our preference. That way, we are able to either ask him to have the meeting or, yes, Councilman Jackson?
Just a question on the rules of that meeting. So you're proposing the governing body take action at that meeting?
No, there was no action scheduled. It was purely informational for both the items that were going to be considered.
Is it possible for the members that can't participate to participate by a conference call or some kind of electronic means?
I don't think that the individuals that were going to be gone would be able to do that, so.
The other thing that can be done, just as a proposal, is I know that there's only three or four that are not going to be able to participate, and just having a recap of that meeting and allowing time, one-on-one with you.
It's up to you. I mean, yes, we can do that. It's up to what the governing body wants to do. But obviously, for us, we will be needing to provide that information and make sure you become educated, especially on this issue of the revenue for implementation of our parking plan. This is very important. There are many twists and turns and possibilities of how we go about accomplishing that, so we need to have that input.
The Mayor?
Has it been recorded?
It was intended to be, yes. We were going to have it at the Holiday Building.
So we could watch the?
Those individuals that missed could watch, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we need to make sure we have six that show.
Is there a possibility of simply going forward with that one with those that can be there, and then only working with the remaining three or four to come up with a time? I mean, these are both pretty, pretty big discussion issues, and you've already made the rounds with us on the, but, you know, ideally, everybody would be there. So I just, if you're having that much of a hard time, and some people are traveling and so on between now and the next three weeks, while we don't have a council meeting, maybe two meetings would be better than nothing.
And that's what I think City Manager is proposing, so.
Yeah, I guess basically I need a confirmation as to whether you'll be there or not, so then we can know whether to have the meeting.
I thought you were just wanting us to give you dates or something, and I thought, oh, no.
No, no, no. I'm just looking at this meeting, whether you can attend in two days or not.
So if the individuals that are attending on Thursday can email City Manager and confirm that they're going to be there, then that gives the City Manager an opportunity to reach out to those of us that are not going to be able to be there. So, thank you, City Manager. Okay, I have two short announcements. One of them is thank you so much to the families in North Topeka, the North Topeka NIA. We had a meeting at Garfield yesterday. I spent Saturday and Sunday door knocking and getting to meet people in the neighborhood. We brought chili to them, and I want to say thank you to the volunteer committee that is always working hard to make sure that we engage our community. We had a nice discussion yesterday. It was enlightening to hear how many individuals we had that had the court enforcement. They had 53 pages. Mark had 53 pages of court enforcement referrals. It was interesting to hear the concerns that some of the neighbors had, and they were absolutely lovely, so I just want to say thank you to them. And then finally, I want to say thank you to our team. Between Liz, Kelly, and Trey, they decided to all pitch in and make sure that this evening we had dinner. And that was one of their ways to say happy bosses' day to everybody on this bench for doing what we do. So thank you all to the staff that made this possible and that made sure that we had food yet a second week in a row, because you guys knew that we were going to be here late. Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any prepared things tonight, but I just want to say that we do have an election coming up in three weeks, and I'd love to see you on the other side of that.
Councilor, Senator. Council, Deputy Mayor?
No, but I was going to say that, too. You need to get out and vote. If you're going to complain, then you need to get out and vote. If you don't complain, get out and vote anyway.
Councilwoman Arty.
Thank you. Don't forget, this is Fire Prevention Month, the shortest two, two meetings that we've had. And don't forget that there's free smoke detectors, and the winter months are coming up, and we need to continue to pass the word. Thank you.
Councilman Emerson, Councilman Padilla, Councilman Jensen.
Just want to briefly say, I went to the League of Kansas Municipalities Conference this past weekend. A lot of great information discussed with the other communities in our fine state. Learned a lot. Encourage all of you to do so if you have the opportunity.
We have one individual sign up for public comment, Mr. Clark Campbell.
I know it's been a long evening, so it's all, take a deep breath. I wish I could make these comments early in the meeting, but I'm not complaining. That's why I stay, because I think there's some things I'd like to share with you that are important. Today's paper, there was an article on the front page about the county addressing the food desert, food insecurity issues. You've heard me bring that to you many, many times. You've seen the success of the Central Topeka Oasis Group, thanks to the Deputy City Manager and the City Manager and, and other great people, Craig Barnes and the group that's the neighborhood group involved with that. 60% of our community is considered a food desert. We lost the store over in Oakland, which increased that. And I guess where I'm going with this is I want to keep it in front of you as something that I would hope that this body would address in a front-page article to the community, that you're engaged, aware, you're sensitive to it, and that you are partnering, public-private partnering, in a much stronger stance than where we've been in the past. I would rather have seen that, say, the city council of Topeka making that announcement rather than the county, but I know the issues in the county are huge also. But this is our community, you are our leadership, and we need to pay attention to what we're doing to fulfill the grocery needs, the health needs of this community. Our physical and our physical health are related, they go together. And so I simply stayed long enough tonight that I wanted to reiterate that. I'm not saying you aren't aware of it, but I certainly would like to see a proactive position by the city council acknowledging that you're working towards a solution. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Campbell. We have no executive sessions, making sure that I'm looking at our legal department. That being said, this meeting is adjourned.